I'd like to bring this meeting to order, Village of Villa Park Board of Trustees Committee, the whole meeting, May 13th, 2024. Clerk Reneki, please call the roll.
Trustee Alfano, trustee Cordova, trustee Corkery.
Here.
Trustee Kozar, trustee Kumar, trustee Patrick.
Here.
President Kazo.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our item tonight is our facility condition assessment and deferred maintenance plan report. Kluber Inc. will present the completed facility condition assessment and deferred maintenance plan. This presentation is to update the board on the analysis of the facility assessment and to give an overview of the next steps in the overall facility planning process. And we have Charlie Jansos, Jansos, with Kluber here, and we'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I'm glad to be back in the village. I'm a project manager as well as a architect, so my background is in facilities, but I also physically did almost half of these assessments, so I have good knowledge. Can you all hear me well? Am I good? Okay. The agenda tonight is to go over the overview of the project and how we approached the assessment, as well as provide an executive summary, and then go into some specific summaries of each building. And then you, of course, have the full report to review. And then, as you mentioned, talk about some next steps. But feel free to interrupt me if you have some questions or something that I say you don't understand or want more information on. So as a project overview, in one of your residents here even asked about, we had three main criteria of the assessment. If you looked at the building, it was either an, or a component. It was either excellent, good, or poor. And then unsatisfactory if it was in a failed state, already damaged or broken or needed to be replaced immediately. So that kept us tight for where our assessment lies. And then in addition to that, we had priorities laid out. It was over a 10-year window, so the priorities broke out the 10 years. Priority one identified as something that should be considered to be done in the first year. Priority two was anything between the first and fifth year. And then priority three was to be done within the 10-year window. And when we get to the summaries of costs and the details by component, you'll notice that there's a cost escalation by year by 3%. And just so if you're doing the math at home, if you see something in priority two, it's assuming it's done in the fifth year, not in the first or second or third of that. So it's assuming the worst-case scenario, okay? And then, of course, if there was nothing that we saw that needed to be done within that 10-year window, it just says none. So at a high level, and I don't know if you can see that, but I know there's a printout in your agenda, and there's a couple of things I wanted to say specifically about this slide. One was about the cost and how those got escalated, but also about the category at the far right, the FCI. In this case, the FCI is a comparison between the maintenance cost and your appraisal cost. And when we're talking about appraisal cost, that's right from your insurance company, what they would say they value that property at and what they would replacement value. It's not the replacement value for it. It's the money that they would give you if something were to happen. But a replacement cost for a building doesn't take into account today's codes, the energy standards, and it doesn't utilize the same materials. I mean, I just walked up the Terrazzo stairs you have up there. It's not a building component we typically use in today's buildings, or stone. A lot of the structures we looked at had components of stone and masonry that is, it's just different materials that people are building with today. So keep that in mind, particularly as we progress through the report and kind of next steps. But right now, this is your appraised value and the cost of the maintenance. All right, so from, now these, there's two slides here, because we have a total of 11 buildings that we looked at. And again, on just this slide, there's seven pores to two goods, so it's kind of a general overall takeaway from your buildings that there's, they're in good to poor condition. And the next page confirms that some more. There's more in good condition on this page than poor. The other element to focus on is the age of your facilities. The average age of your buildings are 59 years. The life cycle of a building in America is about 50. Even if you took away the 114-year-old structure down on Ardmore, that still puts you at 53 years on average. And if you take away the high and the low, then you're still at 56. So there, in general, your buildings are old. Doesn't mean any good or bad, it just means old at this point. There's been some replacement of parts, but not in totality in components. And we'll get to the biggest disadvantage to your buildings are that they were configured for a different time. And ADA code requirements really change how residents interact with their municipalities, how they get in and out of your facilities. So then we'll go building by building here. You're going to see a lot of the same themes. You'll see the ages of each building written here. You're also going to see a lot of the same top three costs, if you get into this. For this particular building, this is the north of Fire Station 82, and it's about just under 400,000 of maintenance and repairs within the 10-year window. And those things include a lot of interior finishes, HVAC, and then the, there's exterior tuck pointing and cracking, things like that, that we want to address on the outside. Again, this kind of highlights by, by building component. That's, that's the list on the far left, starting with the foundation all the way out to the site, and then you can see which year or priority they fall under to get your totals. And again, there's backup for each building system and building component within your report. The Village Hall, the building that we're in, 96-year-old structure, again, just over 600,000 in maintenance and repair. And again, its biggest cost is probably in the roof, an HVAC system as well. And again, I'll just pause a little bit on these so we can take in the cost, but they align. You see all those interior finishes of about 130,000, et cetera. The old fire station and sign shop, again, a 70-year-old, 70-year-old structure, about $1 million worth of replacement, not replacement, but repairs and maintenance. Top three costs again, roofs and electrical. When you think of the big ticket items, exterior site, like repaving or reasphalting, that's a big one, re-roofing and HVAC systems, they're kind of the top, top three in any building system. Because the good news is, is we're not replacing your facades daily, you know, not going out and changing the brick on the outside of your building. And again, the roofing, the top one there, the top cost. And the reason the roofing is broken out, it's the different parts, because you have different parts in that roof. There's different roofs over there, and different things to look at. This building, the original structure was 1980 and 43 years old. It's the far end to the far right of this picture. And what you're seeing predominantly is the 6,000 square foot addition that was done 15 years ago. And most of that $280,000 comes from the older structure. Primarily, it's roof. The green part of this building, of the Parks Building, was just recently re-roofed, so the, the cost of the re-roofed the other section. And again, it's older materials. If you go up there, it's got clay capping on top of the parapet walls, which is typically, they do it in metal now, so it's clay. And again, the breakdown. And again, if I'm going too fast, or if you have some questions, please don't hesitate to interrupt. The fleet garage, and this is a great aerial of it, the biggest expense at this one is those skylights. If we wanted to get rid of those skylights, it would be nice to replace them with something else, then, again, it was re-roofed recently. 55-year-old building, again, just under 600,000 in maintenance and repairs over the 10 years. And the breakdown by component. The cost for the electrical in this is pretty high, too. Then you have the water sewage garage, right off of the water tower down the street here, 45 years old, just 360, 370,000 in maintenance and repairs. The roof, again, is one of your oldest components, and the electrical system in this building is, is at the end of its useful life. And then we come, we come around home to the building across the street, the Public Works and Community Development, 52-year-old, two years old, just under, just over 800,000 in repairs in the next 10 years. Top three costs, the roof, many of the interior finishes, and again, the electrical. And a lot of that electrical is T12 lamps instead of LEDs, which is more common for new, new construction now. The police department, the newest of the buildings, still has a substantial amount of cost, 600,000 plus, with HVAC and electrical and finishes being the top. And I, and I think even during this process, we took one item off some of the HVAC, because you just had RTU, I believe, replaced up there. Villa Avenue Train Station, the museum campus down there, very cute building, love the historical nature, walking through that, I could spend time just looking at all the things. Lot in repairs, there's 300,000, over 300,000 in repairs. Again, it's aged systems, difficulty to get access to things. Even getting to the roof in this was challenging to get to the, some of the units. Again, roof, roof is a big replacement cost. And you see the electrical number there is fairly substantial. The Ardmore Station, 144 years old, 230-plus thousand in repairs and replacement. There are, there is some structural settling that would need to be addressed at this facility. The roof is aged, and there's some cracking from the exterior. Yes, sir?
It should be 114, right?
114, yes, sir. Thank you. Let me get that repaired. 114, not 144. That is correct.
You know it's old people, we don't want to add age.
That's a lot of years to add. We'd have to really knock your, age your facilities up, wouldn't it? Yes, 144.
114.
114. Thank you. Say it again. If I keep saying it enough, it'll be 114.
The 144 is a nice number.
It is a nice number. And then we end, finish down at the Southern Most Fire Station 81. It's 49 years old, just under 600,000 in repairs. Again, the roof, exterior, and HVAC become the top three costs. So some of the next steps that you might want to consider planning, and, and I appreciate the copy of the executive summary, which kind of states it very well. Our assessment was strictly on the bricks and mortars and the age of the equipment and the things that we could see. Some of the items that came up while we were walking through, we've identified that the functionality of your buildings and the utilization of them might not be as appropriate as they are today for serving your community as they were 50 to 100 years ago. Particularly accessibility. Accessibility is a big challenge at this building and your public works. Also, potential growth of your facilities is not totally known, and also where adjacencies. Is it appropriate of community development next to the public works? Maybe, maybe not. But I will say, the best story was when we got to, we were at, we're here on Home Street doing assessments of all these buildings, and in one of your glass cases, there was a plan. So we're like, oh, let's get that plan, so we know, you know, we're walking around and seeing it. And the individual that was helping us at that building had to run across the street to Public Works to make a copy, not, not having access to all the resources, they need to do whatever they're doing. So the, the next things to consider, the biggest challenge that you have is the age of your buildings. I mean, they're just, they're just aged. And they're, the organization of them is challenging. The, the infrastructure is challenging in terms of getting new HVAC equipment in and around. That would be a challenge as well. And we talked about utilization and growth and attraction. How do you keep employees in the, in the village? So the next step, we talked about before, the assessment value and looking at the renewal value. Part of renewal value comes into play if you start looking at a space needs assessment of what it would cost relative to replace something versus totally renovate it. So you look at a total renovation cost and what that might entail, and then you look at a replacement, if you were to build up from ground up on a new site or the same site, doing a demo of existing building. Do you have any questions?
Do you have replacement costs on all of these buildings?
Um, no, not yet. I mean, I could take just the rough square footage and put it into today's dollars, but it wouldn't necessarily take into your site costs nor demolition, but I, we could, we could certainly look at that.
Trustee Kumar.
I have a question. You, you have these updates and stuff. Have you think of consolidation of things into one building, replacement at that point? Because this is, it's great to have this information, but where do we go from here? And how do we determine what's the best modus operandi for the village at hand is not clear from this to me.
Good question. We're doing kind of a mini next step with your fire stations and your fire chief. We were asked to look at a space needs analysis as they were going through challenges with washing facilities, showers and what have you. So we're doing a space needs analysis, and it starts with defining a program. That program would be assuming that you didn't have space limitations. What, what would, what would an updated, state-of-the-art fire station need and want? All those different amenities. So then you have that full-blown program, and then you say, okay, what's our limits for each site? We just met last Friday, talked a little bit about it. Some of the limitations you have on the two sites now is where you can grow. You know, you can go up maybe, which would mean you wouldn't be able to use that fire station for the duration of the construction if you were to build a second level. Build out from them, but you have limitations for setbacks on your property limits. So yes, the, the next steps would be to do a program of spaces by each component that you have, a village hall. What does a village hall need? What, it needs a place to drop off your water bill. I saw that downstairs coming in. So what do, what are the, it needs a, a dais and a, and a village hall assembly space like the one we're in. So you just start to define those spaces and give them square footages. And you start to build up brand-new versus what it looks like to renovate, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense, because, but, I mean, I see the purpose, but as you said already, many of our buildings are aging, and there may be some amount of replacement, full replacement needed, at least in a rotational manner, every 10 years. I mean, like, I'm thinking in every 10-year span, because replacement is expensive, obviously. As a village, we don't have tons of cash. So it, it's important to know what is your top, you know, from this, I get, yes, we need to fix these things. And I understand, like, having a budget to do the fix, having the, you know, it looks like a, you know, a million, a million and a half a year, or whatever. I would like to actually have that total number split up as to just cost of what we need to do per year over the, you know, if this is a 10-year plan, in, in terms of cost. I mean, I can calculate it, but I, you know, we need that kind of number just to tell us, that's the minimum that's going to sit on our budget.
Right.
This is just what you see.
Right.
But the minimum that's going to sit is that, you know, one-tenth of the total for all these buildings, because that's something that, like, you, you're telling me it, it's, it's, you can't do without a roof.
Right.
Yeah, someone, most of the thing seems like electrical, HVAC, and roof.
Correct.
Which, if it blows off, it's an immediate thing. It may be better to contract for a roofing company or whatever and get some cost savings from bundling, saying, over the next five years, you're doing our roofs.
Right.
Whatever it is that we can do to cut our costs whilst still getting this stuff done. But that's, that's something to think about, because there's, it looks like electrical, roof, and HVAC is there for all these buildings. So, I mean, and that's common, right? Even in your house, anywhere you go, that's common. My concern is that we're doing that, but then if the building is not worth doing that, for you're kind of sinking money in. So where, which, which, it would be nice to know which buildings are absolutely not necessarily worth that, that investment right away. And kind of an estimate of how much it would cost to change those kind of thing as well. I mean...
I think it's worth, go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You answer in there.
Well, I mean, I think a space needs analysis, understanding what you need and what real square footage looks like. I think your best first step is probably focusing on the Home Avenue facilities. Not that the fire chief's facilities aren't super important, but we're already doing that one. We're already starting that side. So we're going to have some of that initial information that you'll be able to see. Is it worth putting in, you know, about a million dollars between the two, two sites into those buildings? Or can we put these smaller fixes in and maybe a small addition that gives them some time in the next 10 years that allows them to grow differently later? But there's a lot of things to consider if you were to combine a, a fire station facility, that you've got a nice train that goes through town that might be an impediment for your firemen and women to get from north to south, so...
I think they've thought about that quite a few times, and it's come up as not the ideal, at least.
Not, not yet.
Because we do not really have an underpass that goes through, and the cost of that is more prohibitive than fixing the building. So, is what I, I've heard.
So I think the kind of analysis you'll see from the work with the fire stations will be helpful in that regard, because you'll start to see, okay, the cost to repair is, or to renovate portions of it to make it more usable might be, you know, the hundreds of thousands of dollars range, where an addition might get you up to eight, you know, 2,000, 2 million, and then a whole new building might be closer to 8 to 10 million. So then you'll start to have that conversation, go, is it worth repairing at 300, 400,000? Is it worth replacing at 8 million? Is it worth making a small addition at 1 million and a half or something? And I'm making up numbers, so we're not, we're not to that port yet.
Okay, so like an eerily, like, breakdown of that, yes. And then, we, we did a walkthrough at the, at the very beginning of this process, and then, I mean, even from a layperson's point of view, we could see some really bad shape situations, things that, you know, proper storage wasn't happening, ADA compliance issues, so on and so forth. I don't see so much of the ADA stuff in here for some reason, even though I could see that there was a lot of ADA issues, and you've already kind of talked about that. I don't see any kind of adjustment for those issues within this study.
There's some costs associated with, like, the stairs in this building down, down to your basement area, which, what the cost to replace those, access to some of the places in your warehousing. But by your, by the individuals using it, there's, there's a give and take for what you have to make accessible. The way that you're structured right now with the offices on the second level, where people might, a resident might need to get to somebody up there, if, if that's the case, but most of the offices where the residents would access or a person on the street are on ground level. So you're, you know, it's based on the able-bodied there, too, and who's using it. But they're in, they're, the costs are in there, they're just more, replace the stairs to meet these compliances. Sorry, I keep hitting that.
Trustee Cordova.
So, a couple of questions. The FCI index here, or the facility condition index goes up by 3% every year? Was there a...
No, I'm sorry. The, 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 the facility conditions index is just a, an equation. It's basically taking the appraised value and dividing it by the, the maintenance cost. What goes up by 3% is the escalation from priority one to priority two. So each year, so for example, there's five years from priority one to priority two, the, the costs of an items, today's cost to replace the roof today goes up by 3% every year.
Correct.
To get to the fifth, to priority two cost. That, that's what I meant.
Got it. So from here, there's 1, 2, 3, 4 buildings here that are beyond the 60%, which indicates a replacement as opposed to repair, correct?
It, it means it's typically more cost-effective to replace it than it is to repair.
Got it.
Correct.
So if we look at the appraised value of those, it's like 1.7, and then we're knocking on the door for two more with the fire station, and, and the water sewer garage, which those were another 1.5. So if going by the FCI, we would have 2, 3 million, 3 million in just appraisal of, of cost. So when we talk about repairs and things like that, that is Band-Aids on hatchet wounds, correct?
Correct, correct. Well said. And I, again, why I would, would point you to a replacement value, backs to councilwoman here who's, who's been talking about what it would cost. Replacement value is going to be a better indicator. It still probably will be over 60 for some of these, but that replacement cost would be more realistic in terms of what it would cost to put something of that square footage back onto the site.
Got it.
I mean, just if you took, if you took 1,000 square feet, and there's, and I'm making up numbers, let's say, let's say the 1,000 square feet is going to cost you $1,000. Well, to replace it would be like $350 per square foot, you know? But if the more space you have, 350 in today's dollars, it's, it's probably, you'd probably benefit, more beneficial to replace it.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things I've learned in the, you know, year or so that I've been here is, this was great, right? Because all the buildings are really old. But like, the fire stations, I know you're working on that, you know, each, I think each fire station right now has maybe one shower or two showers, can't remember what the number was. One shower, and we went there for, for a celebration, you know, last month, and I was just looking around, and it felt, it felt kind of old there. And then, you know, learning that there's one shower back there, they go take a shower, or they go to a fire, they have to come back. Everyone has a shower if they go in. We've had a couple fires in the last couple of months here. Yeah, I, I think about that stuff. It's like, all right, they have to line up, or, you know, some of them, they go on another call. I think there's, what, four or five calls a day? I can't remember the number. I think it was like 500-something calls last year, I, whatever. So one or two, three, four calls, whatever it would be. There's times where these guys are out there, and these people are out there for the whole day without taking a shower. So that's, I get that. And this is eye-opening, a little alarming, to tell you the truth, because these buildings have been old for a long time.
They have.
And so I don't know if we've done this exercise before in the village.
I don't know.
Not even, not even just for the fire stations, but just in general. But, yeah, this is where we go, right? Because now we have this ongoing bill every year that, you know, priority one, priority two, it's 3%, more.
Right.
So, yeah, it's another Band-Aid. So, cool. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can you move, can you move back to that, the very first slide with all the numbers?
The executive summary?
Yeah, the executive summary.
I've been looking at my copy, so I've been, I've been ahead of you. This one, yes.
Yeah, this one, yes. And so, as we said, there are certain things that are, you know, above what you said. Most, a lot of these buildings are close to above 60% or whatever, and that they, they, you know, especially, you know, the usage, of course, some may in our mindset be more important or more consistent, and we, you know, that, that comes from our staff.
Correct.
What they feel are more important, and so on and so forth. But I do see three that are, you know, pretty much, you know, at the really bad level, that we probably should address rather quickly. should address rather quickly, rather than slowly. But that doesn't mean, as I said, there's quite a few, like, that are really close to getting there.
Oh, yeah.
And that means that any Band-Aids we put on those are going to probably fall off at one point or soon. So, I would definitely want, like, the village to do a space study on just the four top contending buildings, to see what is the ideal, including cost of replacement, cost, and expected evaluation after the fact of the new building, so on, costs, time it will last.
Yeah.
Expected benefit to the city, because I think all those numbers are kind of important for us to make a proper decision on any of these.
Any other questions from the board? Comments?
Just one good comment, just to put this in perspective, I went back a little bit and did a very rough yes, so, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, you guys put together the budget for maintenance every year, we're doing a few hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's less than any of the numbers we're looking at here.
Yeah, we try to hit the things that are really necessary, the roof repairs and those type of things that we can put a Band-Aid on until we do some more extensive repairs. But this was kind of the catalyst with Mark to do the report, to see where we're at, and so we can plan for the future.
Right. I mean, we saw, I'm sorry, we saw it with Lufkin, right? Didn't do anything for years and years, and it just kind of crumbled away, so, this same thing.
We also did the same thing for Lufkin and Jefferson Pools. We had the same type of assessment for those, and they came up with 1 to 5, I believe it was, I have to check, the reports are still on the website. But they had the repairs for several years down the road, and what's a priority, and what we can hold off for several years. And then, so, when Lufkin, when the liner failed, same thing, it was like, okay, here's the assessments of replacing those at the estimated value, estimated value, and then we brought it to the board.
Cool, thanks. Josie Kumar.
To me, look, if you, even just Priority One things, which are the immediate, you've got about a million a year over the 10 years, even if you don't do anything else, like, even if you just sit on everything else, that's a telltale sign of something needs to be added to the budget and clearly addressed.
Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Thank you again for having me, I appreciate it.
Can you say, we have some public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, for sure.
So, you may have some questions to be asked. Okay, so, we have public comments, has anyone signed up?
No, I have no one signed up.
I will. Just a quick question.
Just give your name, please.
Donna Knoxam.
Thank you.
Do we have any grants available or any programs through Illinois for our historical sites to help aid in paying for this?
We don't have any in hand, we haven't applied for any, there are...
Are they available, is what my question was, to maybe help set, like, the museum and the Commerce Building?
The Ardmore Station and the Museum Building?
Mm-hmm.
They do exist. I don't know, you know, the process and the competitiveness, I don't know. Certainly worth looking at, especially the museum has a specific necessary and stated purpose, so that's something. The Ardmore Station, that's going to be a little bit more, I mean, a little more money is, needs to save it, and although it's 114...
I thought, like you said, the museum has more of a purpose, but for historic, you know, aesthetics of it being on the prairie path, I thought maybe we could get some grant money. Any free money is good money.
Yes, usually. You're doing their work when you take a piece of grant money, so...
So, can we look into that then, or is it possible?
Of course, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Christine Murphy, 523 South Gale Avenue. First and foremost, I would like to thank both you and our staff for putting this together. I don't believe that I have ever seen anything like this, and I think that it is long overdue. So, I think that's wonderful, and I'd like to thank everyone for the excessive amount of work that I'm sure it took to put this together. A couple of things that I have, I would like access to the entire presentation, so if we could post that somewhere, that would be wonderful. Also, it would be interesting to add an additional column onto this slide with the existing annual maintenance for each of these facilities, because it does look extreme, but I do not have the experience to know what our annual maintenance for each of these buildings is. So, while it does look like it's a lot, I would like to see it netted out, to say, how much are we spending on each one annually now, and what is that in comparison to the proposed Priority One, Two, and Three? Thirdly, I'll piggyback off of what Donna said, and I would express my concern over a couple of these buildings that are historical, and I would, even though they are coming up with very high FCI numbers, I personally would really hate to see them knocked down and replaced, so perhaps there's a compromise between repairing our existing, because I know many of them do need significant repair, but if there's a way that we can do something to maintain the facades of each of the historical buildings and still get them up to where we think they need to be to be operable. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Sorry, well, thank you, thank you for your presence.
I have a quick question. So, as our comments clearly stated, there's a few historic sites in this, and from your experience, what do villages generally do, or how do they best address those? Because as, from your numbers, yes, knocking them down is, you know, seems to be the way to go, but at the same time, as, if it has historical value, there's something more to it, to it than just that aspect of it. So, is there a way to kind of categorize kind of these two in a different section, and like, the rest in a different section, and kind of think of it in that manner, a little different manner?
I think that's a huge factor when you start talking a space needs analysis, and you also talk about one of the residents' mention use. When you've got a practical and high-best use for a facility and it's working well, then what do you need to do to make it continue to work in that manner? And I'm particularly thinking of the Villa Avenue Train Station, and it's probably just the roof that is probably the biggest cost that would be worth doing, and keeping that safe, dry, you know, for a while. Then what other access do you want to provide in terms of ADA? That would be something to consider at that site, so that more people can enjoy its historical nature and the components there inside. Those would be, from my opinion, the things to focus on there, but historical is a factor in and of itself, which wasn't in the bricks and mortar side of it. We didn't necessarily take that into consideration, although we could see it, we could see it at both of those facilities.
So, I just think that, like, a little bit of a special, they fall into a sort of a special category, that we should probably address them via that special category. Also, they have, as some of our residents said, a possibility of grants and other things to address historical properties that may kind of change our mindset with respect to those two. And I understand all the rest of them should be on the plan they're on, because they do not have that same consideration.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks again for having me tonight.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it. Okay, that, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Josie Cordova, a second. Josie Kumar, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will close this meeting, and we will open our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. Thanks for everybody for coming by tonight.